Yes.
Okay, if that changes, give me a delay. I can try to do a hotspot on my phone.
Okay. So we have Seth and Michelle Bushnell joining us. Welcome, guys.
Good evening.
Hey Seth, good evening.
Hi, how are you doing?
Hey Seth. Haven't seen you in such a long time.
Anyone else?
Been a little while.
I don't have anybody else waiting. Okay, let's start our meeting. Jeremy, would you like to lead us in the flag salute, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeremy. Roll call, please, Buffy. Councilmember Johnson. Mike, you're on mute.
Missed it. Here.
Councilmember Losi.
I am here.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
I was supposed to forward this.
Mayor Pro Tim Trent, who looks like is not here. Mayor Long.
Here.
All right.
Ten percent. Should I text?
Not on mute.
We can just talk.
Okay. He's gonna join me, but I forgot.
And someone is like creating background stuff. If you can mute your...
I muted them for you.
Thank you, Buffy. You have all the power.
I do.
Okay, um, oral comments from the public. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on anything other than what's on the agenda right now? Buffy, if you want to put up our call number just for a minute, we'll see if anyone calls in. Anyone else over waiting? Hold on, I gotta... There we go. So while we were waiting for anyone from the public that would like to call in, why don't we look at the consent calendar? We have four items: City Council minutes, report of disbursements, continue the declaration of the existence of a local emergency in response to coronavirus COVID-19, authorize city manager to sign a release of all property damage claims from Liberty Mutual Insurance to receive a payment for $549.97. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent calendar?
I would item number three, please.
Okay, anyone else? All right, let's go ahead and close the public comment proportion for oral comments from the public. And Jeremy, what do you got?
Regarding the declaration for the local emergency regarding coronavirus, I've gotten emails from constituents talking about the lack of cost of, or the concern about the loss of constitutional rights during COVID. And I just wanna, you know, I guess, make the city manager aware of any concerns that citizens have regarding closure of government facilities or the, I recently saw an email that said that the COVID response would be the responsibility of the local jurisdictions instead of the county of Humboldt. And that it's complaint-driven and that recently a house of worship was targeted as a complaint about holding services on Sundays. And I just want to make sure that during the continuation of the declaration that those civil liberties are recognized and upheld. I don't know if there needs to be a response to that, or if everybody already assumes that that's the case, but since I'm getting comments from the public, I felt it was worth saying something.
Merritt, I think, is gonna respond. He unmuted himself. Is that correct, Merritt?
Yeah, I just caught the end of that, and I'm trying to resolve some connectivity issues. Can you hear me okay before I provide a response?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I think, you know, what we've been doing is informing the public about the requirements that have been put forth down for the state. And I think religious gatherings are prohibited under the purple tier. And so I think we've informed people. When we've had complaints, we've informed them. And, you know, we haven't issued any citations. We're doing our best to resolve these without issuing any citations. Now it's reverted to the red tier, so those churches can gather again. And so that's where we're at. We're doing our best to gain compliance voluntarily with churches, gyms, all kinds of establishments voluntarily. But it's really a state issue, and we're not mandating or dictating that folks can't gather. We're trying to inform them of those requirements.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion, a motion to approve the consent calendar one through four.
I'll second.
Thank you, Buffy. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Roll call, please. Councilmember Losi.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
All right, and moving on to council review and discussion of commission committee applications and mayor's appointment of seats. Trying to get to my computer. Dosiana wrote this up, but she isn't here. Basically, we're talking about one seat and an alternate on the planning commission and one seat on the major E oversight committee. We do have one application for measure E, one application which was for measure E or the planning commission, and one application for the mission. After talking to all of the parties and really thinking hard about this, I would like to appoint Tina Taylor to the measure E committee. Some of you know that Tina was on the committee for measure E and measure G both times and was very adamant and worked really, really hard to get both of those passed. She worked behind the scenes, some of me not a scene around in public because that's not where she likes to be, but behind the scenes, she was doing everything and anything that we needed done. And so she's totally vested in that measure E, believes in the reason that we needed, and I just feel like she would be a perfect fit for that committee. And then planning commission was a little bit harder. I would like to appoint Mark Sights to the planning commission. He has been waiting in the wings, maybe you could say. He applied a couple of years ago, and at that time, we actually had more people than we needed, which is like crazy. And so he said he would willingly serve on the F-Bid board for a while, get used to Fortuna, meet some more business people, do all the things, and wait till there was another opening so that more people could serve in different places because some of the others either couldn't serve on F-Bid because of meeting times or whatever, or they just weren't that interested in it. They were just totally interested in planning commission. So anyway, I would like to appoint those two people to those two seats. And now it is public comment. Buffy, could you put our public comment information on the screen? And then if any of the council members have comments while that's going up, now's the time. All right, hearing no one call in, does any of the council have any comments?
I think, knowing both of them, I think they're good choices, good, good people with Fortuna community at heart.
I would just like to say that we thank you very much for volunteering and stepping forward to take part on these committees. It's extremely important that we do have volunteers, that we have members of the community that are willing to step up and take part. So we do thank you for that.
Absolutely. We'll close the public comment. Buffy, you can take down our little screen. So any other comments before someone makes a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the mayor's appointments.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Buffy? Councilmember Losi.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Yes, and it's nice to have too many applicants versus struggling to find anyone who wants to serve. So thank you. And I will add one comment that I did offer Melissa Anderson, the alternate for the planning commission, and she did not want to be the alternate. So it's possible that when there's an actual seat that comes up, or when someone's term is up, that she may reapply. So that would be good. All right, moving on to approve a supplemental budget request for the police department for national incident-based reporting system, NIBRS, software changeover for $25,000. Staff report, please.
The police chief, Police Chief Day will be presenting this item to the council.
Good evening, Mayor Long and honorable city council members. First off, Happy New Year. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the Uniform Crime Report. Uniform crime reporting is a collective effort on the part of cities, counties, state, tribal, and federal law enforcement agencies to present really a nationwide view of crime. Since about 1930, the Uniform Crime Report has housed the culmination of national law enforcement data, which contributes to three major publications each year. These three publications have to do with statistics and crime in the United States, hate crime statistics, and law enforcement officers killed and assaulted, all of which have become sources of data widely used by law enforcement administrators, government policymakers, social science researchers, the media, and private citizens. Additionally, uniform crime reporting data is often considered by the federal government in administering law enforcement grants. So in 2015, the Advisory Policy Board for the Criminal Justice Information Services recommended a national transition from the traditional summary reporting system, which we refer to as SRS, that's Summary Reporting System, of the Uniform Crime Report to the National Incident-Based Reporting System, NIBRS. NIBRS is a much more detailed, comprehensive system, and it collects much more robust data and details of crime, making it a more effective tool for policymakers, analysts, and the general public to truly understand crime and make informed decisions about how to address problems. In 2016, the Federal Bureau of Investigation determined that the transition from SRS or Summary Reporting to NIBRS would be completed in 2021. The FBI's UCR, or Uniform Crime Report Program, was scheduled to transition to NIBRS-only data collection by January of 2021. The legal authority for NIBRS is contained in Title 28 of the United States Code, Section 534A and C, which requires the FBI to collect and publish UCR data. Agencies that choose not to participate in NIBRS will not have their crime statistics included in the FBI's nationwide crime statistics. And additionally, agencies may lose federal funding assistance received from participation in the UCR program. For the city of Fortuna, this project can best be reduced in its simplest terms to a software transition. The police department is already utilizing the Sunridge brand RIMs Records Management System, which provides the platform for the aforementioned software upgrade. The software upgrade will bring the police department into compliance with the national reporting standard, and the police department is also designated as a multi-agency systems manager by Sunridge. This means that the Fortuna Police Department not only oversees its own records management system, but additionally, the records management systems for the jurisdictions of Rio Del and Ferndale. Sunridge has intentionally issued high estimates to all agencies involved in the NIBRS transition. And even though the transition is estimated to be $25,000, Sunridge acknowledges that the estimate is intentionally high, so it is expected that this project will cost less than the estimated amount. In addition, due to Fortuna's police, or Fortuna Police Department's designation as a multi-agency system manager, the police department will receive an additional discount, bringing the cost for this project down even more. Sunridge will not invoice any projects until the installation of the software is complete, and the timeline for Fortuna with installation is scheduled to be near or after the fiscal year changeover. However, in this case, a purchase order must be submitted in advance, essentially to reserve our spot for project launch. So just as an issue of information, the majority of allied agencies throughout Humboldt County have already submitted their purchase orders for this transition. Staff is recommending the approval of a supplemental budget request in the amount of $25,000 for the purchase of the NIBRS-based reporting system and software transition project. And I can answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Casey? Buffy, could you put our public comment information on the screen for us?
I have a quick question regarding the staff report. So is that because we're a multi-agency reporting manager, it could be a discount, are you only gonna use the amount necessary? It's just $25,000 or less? Is that what we're, we're voting on?
Yes, we're gonna use the amount that's needed for that project. So whatever that comes in, Councilmember Stanfield is the amount that we'll utilize.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
Just a question if the other agencies will pay a portion of the upgraded software? Or is that built into their dispatch fees?
No, it isn't, Councilmember Johnson. It is inclusive to every agency. So in our situation where we oversee the records management system for Rio Del and Ferndale, each of those agencies also have to submit purchase orders for $25,000.
Okay.
So they're submitting purchase orders, but are they paying the $25,000, or is that covered under our $25,000?
So every, every agency will have to pay their equitable share for the NIBRS transition, if that wears it out.
So out of our 25, they'll pay a share of it later on?
Well...
I'm confused.
Yeah, so every, every agency is responsible for their costs related to the transition. So essentially, each of the three agencies will pay their own share.
So it's kind of like a seat license where we purchase software at the city, and then each user inside the city, there's a fee associated with that.
Yes, sir.
They're paying $25,000 as a seat license for being able to submit their report through the NIBRS system, basically.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And they're invoiced separately?
They are. What we are trying to do is submit all the purchase orders together so that we get on the ticket, basically on the work order ticket at the same time. So we would take the purchase order from Fortuna, Rio Del, and Ferndale and submit those together so that when we go to make the total transition for our records management system, essentially, it's all done at the same time.
Anyone from the public, Buffy?
No.
All right, we'll close public comment. Anyone from the council have any other questions or comments? Seeing none, hearing none, make a motion?
I'll move to approve the supplemental budget request and authorize the transfer of funds from the asset seizure fund in the amount of $25,000.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Buffy, roll call. Councilmember Losi.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to number C, authorize storm drain emergency repair on Dunaway Court and approve a supplemental budget request for the Public Works Department for $80,000, Resolution 2021-01. Merritt, you have the staff report for this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Long. So staff is recommending approval of Resolution 2021, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Miskiess Services, Inc. to repair and line a culvert on Dunaway Court without competitive bidding and approve a supplemental budget request in the amount of $80,000. There's approximately 230 feet of failing corrugated metal pipe that has created a sinkhole between two residences on Dunaway Court. The failing culvert extends from the cul-de-sac to a section of culvert that was replaced in 2018 as an emergency repair. That section also had a sinkhole that was threatening private property. There's a picture included in the staff report showing the location. The entire length of the corrugated metal pipe is showing signs of rust with many small pockets of deterioration. Those areas have not yet failed, like, that have not yet failed, likely do not have a long service life remaining. Two repair options were considered to fix this section of failed culvert, including removing and replacing the culvert using traditional trenching methods or using a structural lining system which can be inserted into the existing pipe without trenching. Lining the culvert is a preferred method, as trenching would require digging an eight-foot-deep trench, removing fences, sheds, and disturbing the landscaping and driveways, and would also require managing the seasonal groundwater, which could be significant this time of year with groundwater levels increasing. It would also increase project costs and have a relatively high risk to, to private property. The second, the option of insertion lining will have a lower cost and not, will not require removing and replacing any fence, sheds, or landscaping. Staff obtained two quotes for lining the culvert, one from Miskiess Services for $61,580, and the other from NorCal Pipeline Services in the amount of $73,390. Both quotes have been reviewed by staff and are consistent with work that was bid for similar work performed recently in Humboldt County. This repair work needs to be completed quickly as failing to do, to proceed could result in larger sinkholes and damage to adjacent private properties from the city facility. Therefore, staff's recommendation is to move forward with an expedited line repair performed by the contractor, Miskiess Services, without competitive bidding pursuant to Section 2.50.70D of the Fortuna Municipal Code. And that allowed, that section allows the council to dispense with formal competitive bidding for the procurement of materials and, and services and author, and allows them to authorize the city manager to negotiate directly with contractors if the council finds this in the public's best interest. Additional funding in the amount of $80,000 is being requested to be allocated from the citywide storm drain maintenance project, CIP 9373, which will come from Fund 130 Storm Drain Maintenance Reserves. The current balance of Fund 130 is approximately $330,000. If the budget adjustment is approved, the citywide storm drain maintenance project will have a projected remaining balance of about $90,000 after the other planned projects are completed. The cost of this lining project is $61,580, which would leave a CIP balance of $28,420 for a contingency on this project and other storm drain repairs that may occur this fiscal year. Therefore, staff is requesting that the council authorize a 10% contingency for this project as well, that would bring the maximum contract amount to $67,738. That concludes the staff report for this item. There are photos of the site, again, showing the side area, pictures of the inside of the failed culvert, also photos of a recently lined culvert on Drake Hill Road that was performed by the county. There are also quotes from the contractors that are attached. Bob Nat, our General Services Superintendent and Deputy Director of Public Works, Kevin Carter, put together the staff report, and we are all available to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Merritt. Let's open public comment, Buffy. And then does council have any comments or questions for staff?
I was reading through the staff report, and I noticed that they did men take time in their proposal to note that they are going to patch the, grout the bottom of the pipe, the invert, where you can see, if you looked at the staff report, you'll see the failed portion. So that's a good thing, especially if you look at the picture of the pipe on Drake Hill where it looked like it may not have been patched, and you can see a divot in the lining. So I think, think that they've thought it through.
Any other comments?
I had a question. I'm guessing that the reason for the failure on this pipe is age?
Yeah, one of the things that we're seeing, a lot of the city's infrastructure was put in any time between 20 and 60 years ago. And there are corrosive soils in the city of Fortuna that lead to more rapid deterioration of corrugated metal pipes. We're seeing this throughout the entire city. And so that's, it's been a trend over the last several years of having to repair a number, you know, a metal pipe, at least two or three of them per year and sinkholes resulting. And so we're putting a lot of effort to that. But it's, it's a combination of age and the soil conditions and the pipe materials that were originally installed on many of these projects. You know, Rancho Buena Vista is not that old of a subdivision, and, you know, now we're putting in corrugated, high-density polyethylene pipe. And so we're not, we won't see those kind of failures like we are with the corrugated metal pipes. It was just that that was a more prevalent building material that was accepted at the time.
I have a question on the picture for the Drake Hill Road project. Can you tell me what the material is and what the lifespan of it is for these retrofitted or newly lined pipes as opposed to just replacing with plastic?
Bob, would you like to comment on that one?
Yeah, I definitely, Councilman Stanfield, the, that, those two pipes were done by Mixes this earlier, or late part of this, this year. And not totally thinking of how the length of time, but I, as I've talked to the companies and stuff, even if the material goes away, the lining will stay in place. That's what they've been told by both companies on these quotes, that even when all the whole pipe's gone, the lining material is, is there, it's rigid, it's ready, just stay in place.
So it, I, you know, so what, the liner is structurally independent of the pipe outside, so the entire metal pipe could corrode, and you'd have essentially a new plastic pipe inside that we'd expect normally to have a 50-year-plus life.
Was that five zero or one five?
Five zero typically is a life cycle if you have a new plastic pipe.
Okay, thank you.
Has anyone called in from the public, Buffy?
No.
All right, let's close public comment. Does anyone from the council have any additional comments or questions?
Just one, I have done a pipe replacement project in a neighborhood through backyards and on fence lines, and this is a much easier, less intrusive, and community-friendly way of doing it with the... I'm not sure about this one, but a lot of these inserts like this are fiberglass material with polymer that goes in, and it does produce a long-life, non-corrosive lining in the pipe. And this is a good alternative to moving sheds and tearing down fences.
I would just credit our Public Works Department, staff, Bob, Kevin, others, you know, looking at this alternative, recognizing to be employed elsewhere in the county, evaluating for use here, and coming up with something that really will save us a lot of money to a conventional method of open cut and really reduce the nuisance and interruption of residents who live adjacent to it. So, you know, I'm happy with our staff that put this together and came up with the solution and are ready to take going on it.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, my only concern was I just didn't want a 15-year band-aid on it. If it was gonna be a, you know, the old adage of do it once, do it right, or do it right, do it once. If it means that it's gonna last 10 times longer, I'd say, let's bite the bullet and do it correctly. But if it's a, it's a product that is equal or as good as or better than the disruption of the trenching, then I'm all for it, and I thank staff for, for bringing this alternative. I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-01 and read by Title only. Authorizing the city manager or his designee to approve a supplemental budget request and execute the contract with Mekes Service for the repair of the Dunaway Court culvert not to exceed $67,738.
I'll second.
Buffy, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Do you want me to read the resolution first?
Yes, please.
Resolution number 2021-01, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Mixes Services, Inc. to repair and line culvert on Dunaway Court without formal competitive bidding. Councilmember Losi.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Thank you, staff, for coming up with the solution, and especially this...
Thank you, staff, for coming up with a solution, and especially this time of year, we don't have to disturb the ground with all this water. That is awesome. Our next one is Item D, authorize staff to negotiate professional services contracts with GHD, Inc., SHN, Ontoverison Associates, Witch Church Engineering, Cletco, and Lakos Associates for on-call consulting services. I believe Merritt has the staff report on this one as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Long. So staff requested proposals for various on-call consulting services on October 27th with a request for qualifications that was advertised in newspaper of general circulation on the city website. The intent of the RFQ was to provide a list of professional consultants for the city to be able to efficient efficiently call on to provide, to provide routine task, routine tasks that the city needs outside support on. These on-call contracts will allow the city to contract work with consultants in an on-call capacity and satisfy the city's procurement requirements for competitive selection for professional services. Staff is taking this approach of selecting the most qualified consultants in advance to reduce the timeline and effort necessary to contract with firms for routine engineering tasks for which the city routinely, um, uses outside engineering firms to complete. The last all-on-call engineering contract that the city completed was in 2013 and was awarded to only one consultant. By awarding on-call contracts to multiple consultants, staff can use multiple firms to complete on-call tasks and select the best-suited firm within those approved for on-call contracts. Additionally, Phil Gutierrez of Gutierrez Land Surveying was also contracted previously to act as a city surveyor under an on-call contract. Mr. Gutierrez retired at the end of 2020 and will no longer be able to provide surveying services to the city. Therefore, one of the on-call engineering firms will act as a city surveyor for the city of Fortuna, and another will be an alternate in the event that there are conflicts of interest. Staff received six proposals on December 1st, 2020, and at that time, staff reviewed the proposals, and each proposal included the areas that each firm would want to complete tasks in, including traffic engineering, public works engineering, development review services, environmental services, drafting and design services, and land surveying services. Staff will assign service requests and task orders as determined appropriate by the the Public Works Department, the city manager, city engineer, and the deputy or the deputy city engineer. The on-call consultants will be responsible for completing the tasks and milestones according to a negotiated timeline. The on-call consultants will also be asked to provide scope of services in advance, um, for individual assignments. And projects will, those those tasks will be, um, completed from other approved funding sources and budgets. Entering to a contract with consultants as a part of this action will not commit time or budget to working on a specific project. The task will only be assigned to on-call consultants that have approved budgets under regular operations budget or under a capital project or otherwise approved by the council. The proposed fee schedules and rates for each firm are included with the staff report, and staff has the ability to further negotiate these fees with the selected consultants. That concludes the staff report. Kevin Carter, uh, prepared the staff report, and Kevin or I would be happy to answer any questions regarding this.
If you could put up our public comment information, does the staff have any questions or comments for, I'm sorry, the council have any questions or comments for staff?
I was happy to see that we have so many choices for engineering services in our community, and I was really appreciative of the fact that we have several, um, Fortuna options because the Fortuna uh, businesses are the ones that actually support our city and they, um, you know, give to all of our events, and they just take a lot of pride and interest in Fortuna, so it's nice to have Fortuna businesses involved rather than just, um, some of the ones from out of town. So that made me happy. I don't know about you guys.
Any public comment, Buffy?
No.
All right, let's close public comment. Any comments from the rest of the council?
I agree, Sue, with your sentiment that, um, it's good to have these local Fortuna, um, businesses. We know them and they know us. Something to see in there.
Yeah, looking at the two local firms, you know, I I've seen a number of projects, whether it's structural engineering for the ice skating rink or assistance for one of our, our construction projects or water or sewer projects, we've had good support from the local engineering firms, and they've done a good job on our other projects. So it'll be nice to have more than one on-call firm, and our hope is to be able to work with each one of the firms and find those tasks that are, you know, best, um, suited to each one of those firms within this approved on-call, um, within the approved on-call contracts that the council would be approving tonight. Again, I'm sorry if it wasn't clear, but, you know, this isn't authorizing any budget, it's selecting the most qualified consultants, and we would come back to the council if there was something that we were going to give these consultant that needed consultants that needed, uh, additional budget authorization. Again, we are grateful to have a number of highly qualified firms that want to work with the city.
Thank you, Merritt. Anyone else?
Yeah, I called the city manager earlier with a few concerns about whether this was taking any, um, responsibilities from our current staff, and he assured me that this is not doing that. This is relying on, um, experts, and to have local experts do the appropriate type of work that's outside the scope of our staff is a real blessing to have, um, local expertise, uh, on an on-call basis, and these firms willing to step up in those capacities. So I appreciate the city manager answering my questions and want to relieve any concerns from the public as to whether or not this is, uh, taking away from the responsibilities of our local staff. It's not. Um, our staff has a full plate, and this just, uh, accentuates their effectiveness, I think, is the best way to say it, so.
Thank you.
Mayor Long, if I could just make one comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, this this is not for the normal day-to-day work, you know, this is for things like, you know, doing the review calculations, um, you know, for subdivisions by a surveyor, or maybe doing some, you know, highly skilled technical work, like some of the work we've got done with the flood control. And if you look at the professional services budgets that are operating budgets, especially for community development or even public works, they're relatively small budgets. So that's the area where from the budget that we pull from for these, and again, those are small budgets. So big, big assignments would normally end up coming back to the council for funding decision. And I appreciated getting Councilmember Stanfield's question. I also have that, um, same question from Councilmember Trent. She had the same concern, so I'm glad to to have the question asked tonight.
Anyone else?
I make a. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
We got two mics. Mike Losi, go ahead.
I'll move to approve a professional services contract with GHD, SHN, Ontoveris and Associates, Witch Church Engineering, Clet Company, Lake and Lakos Associates to provide on-call consulting services for a three-year period with the potential of such services being extended for up to three additional years, at which time renegotiation of fees may occur.
I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Buffy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you. My last item for council business, uh, E, authorize the addition of an engineer in training annual incentive to the treatment plant operator matrix in the amount of $2,500. Staff report, please.
He's muted.
Merritt, you're on mute.
I hate it when that happens. Uh, so so that is staff's recommendation. Uh, the requirements for experience, training, and certificates required for various positions within the Fortuna Employee Association, also known as FEA bargaining unit, are identified within a matrix for each division that is incorporated into the MOU. The matrix for each division also lists certificates for which employees can obtain additional pay that are above and beyond the experience level required for that position, and the incentive pay amount for each incentive an employee is eligible for. The rationale behind the incentives is to allow for employees to advance their skill level beyond what is required for their position, and and that the more highly skilled employee will provide additional value to the city by having a higher level of skill set. There's presently one operator in the wastewater treatment plant division who possesses possesses a unique skill set with a higher level of training and certification than you would normally see. That employee is a certified engineer in training, a certificate issued by the Board of Professional Engineers and Land Surveyors for engineers on their path to registration as a professional engineer. This operator, too, is able to contribute above and beyond his classification and title. Possessing an EIT certificate typically requires a higher level of math proficiency, experience in programming computational methods, and typically a four-year engineering degree or equivalent experience to prepare one to take the exam to receive their certification. The operator, too, that we currently have on staff has demonstrated their ability to complete computer programming, computational methods, mathematical modeling, and has an understanding of water and wastewater treatment that has allowed for our staff to improve the operation of the treatment plant and reduce costs by completing tasks in-house that are normally done by outside contractors. An example of some of the tasks, um, completed by our operator, too, that has his EIT certificate are detailed in the staff report and include very generally the, um, the status system computer program, which is, I'm going to botch that, but essentially it's a control system, um, which we use to operate our wastewater treatment plant. Uh, he's able to proficiently develop spreadsheet models for the wastewater treatment plant and and better improve our solids mana solids management and handling. Um, he's able to do some of the programming for our programmable logic computers at our remote sites and allow them to work, uh, more efficiently and effectively with, uh, the treatment plant in a remote fashion. Staff, um, is proposing to add the EIT incentive in the amount of $2,500 per year to to to, um, the TPO 2 and TPO 3 positions. This amount is approximately is is $1,000 more than a, uh, a lab analyst incentive we'd get with their California Water Environment Environment Association lab analyst incentive. It's elevate. This proposed incentive is offered for both the TPO, which is also offered for the TPO 2 and TPO 3 positions. At this time, only a TPO 2 would qualify for this incentive. Only one TPO 2 would qualify for this incentive. It's unlikely that there will be additional operators to pursue and eat that would pursue an EIT certificate due to the time and expense that it would take to learn the engineering fundamentals necessary to pass the exam. This request was initiated by the chief plant operator in response to a request, uh, by the F, the Fortuna Employees Association. The city manager, human resources director, uh, met and conferred with the FEA with regard to this request and support this request and change. Adding this incentive will improve our chances of retaining a valuable employee in the wastewater division that has demonstrated that their skill set brings a significant improvement to the operation of the division. Approving this addition, the addition of this incentive will increase the wages paid by the city by $2,500 annually. This amount would be split between the budgets for water treatment and storage and wastewater pumping and treatment. It's anticipated that there will be a net savings with these funds as a result of decreased outside contractors being needed for routine programming and other similar tasks. A copy of the proposed proposed revisions to the matrix are included, um, with the staff report and attached. You know, and I I I think this is one example, normally, um, we don't like to bring changes to the council, to the MOU between negotiations, but this is one instance where the city remaining flexible and considering an incentive for somebody with the need qualifications will give us a better chance of retaining that employee and compensating them for some of the value that they bring to the city with their increased skill level. So, um, I appreciate the council considering this request, and and it's my hope that the council will approve this, um, change to the incentive.
Thank you, Merritt. Buffy, if you'll put the public comment information on the screen, and we'll open public comment. Does anyone from the council have any questions or comments? I did ask Merritt about talking about this in like an open session rather than closed session for negotiations, and basically, it's not a negotiation. We're not doing the back-and-forth thing. We're basically just deciding whether we're going to approve this or not approve this. So that was the answer for that one. Any other comments, questions?
I do have a comment, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
I really like to approve these kinds of additions because hopefully it will create a net savings down the road as of decreased use of outside contractors, as is stated. That's in addition to hopefully retaining this employee for long term. I think it's a, it's a good move to, uh, have have this item approved.
Thank you, Mike. Any other comments or questions?
Just one comment. Chris Christiansen, um, our chief plant operator helped to put together the staff report, and I asked Chris, how much do you think we'll save in any year? Chris gave me a long, I think, page and half answer and analysis, but, you know, very simply, you know, with just the work that we're already seeing, this op two with the ZIT do, normally we'll spend on some of the programming with some of our outside consultants, you know, $35,000 or more. And so we're expecting easily to to, you know, see, you know, $10,000 to $15,000 cost savings. So, you know, I think this employee would want to do that anyway, but again, we want to try to recognize the higher skill sets, and we think in this, the way to go on this, and again, appreciate the council's ability or considering this and, uh, offering the flexibility to to bring something like this.
Like, I do appreciate the manager recognizing the value of the employee and bringing it to our attention so that we have the opportunity to proactively retain a quality employee rather than reactively try to scramble if they do get, uh, pulled away to a better, uh, incentive opportunity. So, uh, commend the, uh, the plant manager for making this recommendation to keep, uh, city top of the, top of the food chain or top of the game.
This will also enable, um, operations to be more quickly updated and repaired if necessary, if that's a word you want to use, but uh, instead of having to wait for a consultant to show up or to put out an RFQ, we'll be able to react much quicker and take advantage of the those abilities. So it's a, it's a win-win.
A quick question financially, and and this isn't going to change my vote necessarily, but with a incentive for certifications, does that change obligations down the road regarding, CalPERS, Cal, and and those kind of, uh, retirement benefits? Is there another, uh, monetary obligation other than the $2,500?
I think our finance director could probably an answer it best, but essentially that $2,500 would be, uh, viewed as salary, and so it would go towards the, it it would be, um, included in the CalPERS calculation, I believe.
Okay.
And I see Aaron nodding his head, so I think that's right.
Yeah, for for our non-safety employees, uh, the benefit cost is anywhere between 10 and and 20%, so we can tack on another $250 to $500 in added benefit costs on top of the $2,500.
Thank you, Aaron. Any calls from the public, Buffy?
No, we don't have any callers.
Okay, let's close public comment. Any additional comments or questions from the council?
Well, in keeping with, uh, Councilmember Stanfield's question, the I was looking at the matrix and just for my own knowledge base, this, um, any continuing education or such as that, is this a, this is a non-city-funded CE, if I read it correctly. Is that right?
Yeah, so the employee brought, this is not something the city paid to have this training or certificate done. It's one that they'll receive an incentive for, but it's not a city-paid, uh, training or testing.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to add the annual $2,500 incentive to the treatment plant operator two and three, known as shift supervisor positions in the treatment plant operation matrix.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Buffy?
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right. Thank you, guys. We have a discussion item tonight. I know most of you, well, all of us actually know that we have an issue with our recycling programs and everyone's still being charged the CRV fees when there's nowhere to take your recycling in Humboldt County. So the state now is sending out letters to our retailers. Grocery outlet is one of the bigger ones that is involved and Seth McGrath is on Zoom with us tonight to talk about this a little bit, and they basically are asking us to support their opposition to the state finding our businesses $100 a day for not having your recycling center set up. So Seth, I'm going to actually just ask you to take a couple of minutes and we've all read your letter, but if you want to just take a couple of minutes and explain what you've done so far and how we can help, that would be appreciated.
Okay. Thank you so much for putting this on the agenda and allowing me the opportunity to discuss this with council. This, this letter was generated by a group of retailers, mostly in the, in the northern part of the county, Eureka McKinleyville. Just to give you a flavor of who's involved, you have Eureka Natural Foods, Wild Berries, North Coast Co-op, Murphy's Market. I'm a little bit late to the party with that particular group. I didn't get recognized until I started sending letters to Senator Maguire, and I've been lucky enough to be a part of it. So basically the letter is, is pretty self-explanatory. For a lack of a better word, I guess protest is, is a good thing to say, but maybe not the right word to explain this, but you know, we understand that we have an obligation to provide recycling as a retailer if there is not a recycling center within, you know, a mile and a half of our facility. Thankfully I have been, you know, in Strong's Creek and we've had Recology and we've had our exemption, but all of our exemptions were, were pulled at the same time because Humboldt Waste Management could not keep up with the demand. And then, as we all know, Recology has shut down. So essentially CalRecycle has decertified them and they literally did it overnight. I currently, with all of the retailers involved, are on our third letter. We have until January 7th to become compliant. If we do not become compliant by January 7th, we pay $100 a day. So for me and my location, I don't have the space. I don't have the facility. And most importantly, if I did decide to recycle and support the community in that respect, I have nowhere to take it. So it just puts a huge burden on business. So essentially what the letter is, is basically saying that we're all coming together as local retailers, asking CalRecycle and the governor to address Humboldt County situation. Yes, all counties face issues, but Humboldt County is, is far and alone separated from the rest of California with time and distance. So we want to address the issue by bringing it to the governor's attention that we need to fix the issue in Humboldt County, and it's not appropriate to fine businesses $100 a day. They're adamantly saying it's not a fine, it's a choice, but it's a fine and we all know that. But most importantly for our consumers, they're being taxed with the CRV. And now as local business owners, we're paying another tax of $100 a day. So I know for myself, you know, we have me and Beveridge Plus who are on board with this. I believe I saw on CalRecycle's website that Rite Aid, the shell on Ronerville and another local business had elected to recycle. But as far as Safeway and Rage the Concern, you know, they're going to pay the $100, but for me being a small business, that gives back to the community in a huge way. This is a, a big bite out of what we can do locally to support our community. So all we're asking is that either the local city governments tack on and support this letter and sign or collectively find a way to write a letter that would support this effort for, you know, greater Humboldt County.
Thank you, Seth. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Seth?
I fully support the sending of the letter and the bringing the attention to the governor and our elected representatives in the state government. And some way to get through to CalRecycle to recertify and allow for the appointment system to take care of the backlog and then business could operate as usual at the recycling centers. It's the backlog that causes a problem right now. Though I'm not sure why they thought they couldn't do an appointment system, but it's ridiculous.
Can you make a comment, Madam Mayor?
Yes, couldn't find you for a sec.
Over the last week or so, I have authored two letters, one to State Senator Mike Maguire and the other one to our Assembly Member Jim Wood, requesting that they might contact the new CalCycle or CalRecycle Director. As a matter of fact, I believe she took office just today. And requesting that she propose an extension to postpone these taxes, these fines or these penalties, whatever you want to call them, until the legislature and the governor can figure this whole mess out. I, I think it's going to be up to them to take the appropriate action. And I believe we should be able to reach a consensus that to support a letter from the city saying basically the same thing.
So my thought was to write our letter from the city council rather than just add on to the retailers, because I think that if they send one and we send one as well, it seems like it makes a bigger statement. That's just my thought.
Absolutely.
I think that that's appropriate. And, and just for clarification, the letters that I wrote were as an individual and I made that clear in the letters. I was not representing the city council and did not write those at the behest of the city council. It was just me personally. So I think a letter from the city would be appropriate.
Mayor Long, we'd be happy to put such a letter together for signature by the entire council or the, or the mayor.
What do you guys prefer, the entire council or just the mayor?
I think the entire council.
Okay. So when you have the letter ready, if you could just let everyone know so everybody can stop by and sign it, that'd be great.
We'll, we'll take care of that. And I appreciate Mr. McGrath bringing attention to this. This is something that, you know, not having recycling options, one of the other unintended consequences of that is we have people stockpiling large amounts of debris in their yards and it's creating other public nuisance issues. So this is an important issue to the city. You know, we have been in contact with our, our state representatives on this as well, and, and the city very much wants to see a resolution. So thank you, Seth, for, for shining more light on this and getting more attention.
Thank you all very much. Truly appreciate it.
You're welcome. Hopefully it'll make a difference. I don't know.
Please let us know if there's other things we can do, if we can challenge other municipalities locally to write the same letter and put the same pressure in the higher-ups. I mean, we need to figure this out and to put it on the backbones of our local retailers when they're already struggling with the pandemic and saying that this just is how it has to be is really, I mean, I, I read the response letter from CalRecycle and I mean, there was no empathy in that letter whatsoever. What a frustration you guys are dealing with. And I just, I thank you for bringing it to our attention. Please let us know if this doesn't solve your issue, what else we can do. You know, if it means each one of us writing a letter and inundating that off, our, the office of our local representatives, let's do that too. I mean, let's do it times five instead of one letter with everybody signing it. I'm, I'm for that too. Let us know how we can help.
Will do. I have a, a meeting with the, the group tomorrow and we'll have an understanding of what other local government, city governments are, are willing. Honestly, Fortuna has been the only council to put this on the agenda. So I'm thankful for that, you know, making some headway here and hopefully that'll encourage other, other jurisdictions to, to jump on board. So any constituency you have up, up north, you could have conversations with. I, I don't think that would hurt any bit.
Okay.
Thank you, Seth.
Any other comments or questions before we close that item? All right. Hearing none, hopefully something can be done about this because it's just absolutely crazy. All right. City managers report, Merritt?
Thank you, Mayor Long. Just a, a brief recap of the, or a, a brief listing of the upcoming meetings. Our next regular city council meeting will be at 6:00 PM on January 19th. Our next regular planning commission will be on January 12th at 6 o'clock PM. Our next regular Measure E meeting will be on January 20th, the 2021. I just want to make a special note about that Measure E meeting. That is the meeting that we will be looking for input from the public and ideas for spending. And it'll be an opportunity to review what past spending has been done and any project ideas for new Measure E projects at that meeting. And you may have noticed that we put a flyer out with the water bills to let the public know about this meeting in an effort to get more participation from the public. And then lastly, our, our next Rona Community Recreation and Park District meeting will be on January 6th. Just a few brief updates. One, I'm continuing, I'm continuing to work with our police department to complete the schematic design of the police operations building at Newburgh and Ronerville Road. We received a draft schematic design from our consultant and we're working to provide comments this week. And with the ultimate goal of having construction drawings and a building permit by the spring, but it's going well. Have had great participation, participation from our entire police department. And so I'm excited about moving that project forward. Our human resources director and many others on staff have, have worked very hard to put together a COVID prevention program and protection program that and will be continuing to perform tasks identifying that plan such as communication in, of information to employees, identification, evaluation of hazards and investigating and responding to potential cases in the workplace. This will be an ongoing effort and this is one now that's being mandated by CalOSHA. So it requires a lot of work on the city part. And a lot of that's going to just be, again, evaluating and trying to minimize hazards within the workplace. I've also been discussing a recent audit of Altus and Sunny, which is also known as Suddenlink by Access Humboldt in providing input on how best to recover some of the franchise fees that, fees that are owed to the city and other municipalities. It's a relatively small amount, but we're, you know, Access Humboldt has noticed some irregularities with that and, and feel that the proper amount for the franchise agreement is not being paid. So we're working cooperatively with the other agencies to try to recover as much as we can. And then on a similar note, we are working with other local municipalities to restore the Bradley Burn sales tax that have traditionally gone to agencies with car lock fuel stations. Some of those are currently now being attributed to municipalities outside of Humboldt County for fuel sold in Humboldt. So we're hoping to be able to rectify this and, and move that back into those sales being recognized at the place that fuel is dispensed. So that's a group effort working with some of the other municipalities. So that's all I have for my report.
Thank you, Merritt. And just a note on that January 19th meeting, that is a Tuesday. Everybody will remember to mark their calendars accordingly because it's kind of out of our norm to have it on Tuesday rather than Monday. So any future agenda items? Anybody have anything they want to make sure we talk about in the next couple of months?
I, I have one that might just be a report only, but I noticed on 12th Street, we're seeing a lot of AT&amp;T trucks and Danielson Construction trucks. And I saw a lot of our staff standing on the corner. Looks like that telecommunications project phase two is underway for the undergrounding. I'd love an update from that, just so the public can understand what's going on and the timeline involved. It could be today or it could be a future agenda. I'm, I'm fine with either.
So I, I know Kevin's here. We, probably best, we can give you an update. As I think it probably best if, since we're under future agenda items, we could bring that back and provide you with some more information on that in the future. Unless Kevin, did you have a, any, a few comments to respond now, if, if you'd allow, Mayor Long?
Sure.
Yeah, so there has been some activity recently. They, the contractor, Danielson, who is a sub for AT&amp;T is applied for and has obtained an accrosera permit to pull some of their wires, underground wires to, to continue the process. Suddenlink has not contacted the city as of yet. However, I've noticed myself out there, a couple of Suddenlink trucks. I think they're doing a little bit of reconnaissance. Hopefully they reach out pretty soon. If not, I'll be in contact with them. As far as seeing kind of the, the group that was standing out there, we were looking at pretty good disturbance that might have happened here pretty soon next to City Hall. And with the groundwater, the way it is, we're, we're suggesting that that gets put off till August. However, it's not going to change the schedule of the project. It'll, they'll be able to pull the wires and, and they'll be removing some of the poles from AT&amp;T in the, you know, as they move along and then repairing the sidewalk as they go. So we're hoping, you know, it's still a long process, but I think it's going to be another nine months or another, or a year. So that's, that's my understanding at this point. I'm looking very forward to it myself. It's been a long project and, and can't wait to see all those poles gone. Can't wait to see that nice, beautiful corridor down 12th Street. And it'll be a, a good feeling once that, that project is complete. But yeah, it's, it's good to see some, some progress being made by both AT&amp;T and Suddenlink.
And I'll just say, we can provide another update when we have a more definitive timeline. Kevin has been doing a good job of continuing to inquire. You know, PG&E did their work. They topped the poles, cut off the poles and left the remaining communication. AT&amp;T, Suddenlink, they still have their work to do. And these Rule 28 projects are the type of projects cities do every once in a great while. So it's, it's kind of a difficult process to understand and what the timelines are for, for, for each of the entities to get their work done. And so Kevin's done a good job inquiring and we have seen, I think, some of the response as a result of that. And, you know, so we'll continue to push and, and bring the council an update as a future agenda item when we have more to share.
Thank you, guys.
I know I get inquiries on that every so often as well. It's like, when's it going to be done? When's it going to be done? So thank you.
Yeah. It's a little different than our normal construction where we have a little more control on the, the schedule. AT&amp;T and Suddenlink are, they're a little bit like PG&E and that they do things at their own time. We have some, you know, influence. Squeaky wheel gets greased sometimes. And so that's what I try to do is just keep on them and keep inquiring.
All right. Thanks. Anything else for future agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move on to council reports. Mike Johnson?
Remember to unmute first this time. Well, we've had some busy HCOG work going on. This last week on the 28th, Beth Burks, our new HCOG executive director, was slated to take office and assume the responsibilities. And Marcella May, our outgoing executive director is going to be able to work part-time, giving some orientation and getting her adjusted, getting Beth adjusted to the new position. We've also been working on the RTP, Regional Transportation Plan, greenhouse gas reduction portion of the regional transportation plan, as is so many things. This is now part of the transportation planning requirements for state and federal funding. And we're working on that and I believe it's going to be available to be released to the public at the next, for comment at the next meeting in January. And January CTC meeting, hopefully they'll have, be able to take and have, take up an item to return unused local funds that were slated for projects locally from the Safety Corridor project. And hopefully that'll take place and we'll be able to use the money that was allocated for local transportation projects locally instead of getting, we'll get some of that back from unused portion from the Safety Corridor project. Also, we got an update on the Last Chance Grade and it looks like they're hoping that they can deliver the finished design in February, this latter part of February. So we'll get a look at that. There's drilling is ongoing. Some unique aspects of helicoptering the equipment in and utilizing drilling rigs that way. Getting them on the ground and getting core samples done for the geotech portion of that. Also, in some reports from the Safety Corridor Traffic Enforcement, which was always a In some reports from the Safety Corridor Traffic Enforcement, which was always a uh. A good portion, a good report in from the, that is that uh it seemed to be a youth movement in December with. A lot of uh. Youth people, uh, a, you know, our younger set with speeds up to between sixty-five and eighty plus miles an hour. Uh, fairly population fairly distributed throughout the county. So wasn't any one city or. Was just seemed to be a regional thing instead of uh just one town. So even if you don't see out there, there, there are safety patrols at work and you will get stopped. And uh I'll bring a number of miles patrol than a number of stops made and you'd be surprised at the next meeting. But uh that time, this time, that's the last of my reporting for today.
Thank you, Mike. Um, Councilmember Mike Losi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm the um city's representative on the Board of Directors for the Redwood Coast Energy Authority. Uh, which I have not attended a meeting, but there, they meet every uh Thursday, um, the fourth Thursday of every month. So the next meeting will be January twenty first, which I will attend. Also starting on January twenty fir- on the twenty first, I will be attending uh League of California Cities um training. For uh mayors and council people. It'll be more of an update for me, having come off of the council in twenty fifteen. So I'm looking forward to updating myself on a lot of the changes and laws, principles and policies for the League of California Cities. I also uh sat in on a roundtable discussion for the League of California Cities on December the sixteen. And um, which was, it was attended by about forty people from throughout. California and it was chaired by the mayor of Yountville, John Dunbar. And um I learned that the league now has a new moniker. They're calling themselves Cal Cities. So that was as effective uh as of um November. So it's an abbreviated name. Um, so when you hear Cal Cities, that's the league. The discussion uh with the roundtable started on the strategic advocacy priorities for twenty twenty one, which can be found on the Cal Cities website. So if you're interested, you can take a look at those. But the discussion really uh came quickly to the COVID issues and. Um, how different cities are currently struggling with. Uh, keeping communication lines open between the city, there's their um communities, uh businesses and. Uh, people in their communities. Um, it was interesting because one person mentioned, uh, this is in Southern, in the L A area. Uh, where there is the purple tier, they are in the purple tier. Eighteen percent bed target isn't because of space limitations. But rather on the limitations of adequate staff to treat the numbers of patients. So um for our region, it might very well be a lack of beds to be able to, to, to have. Numbers of people, you know, in those, in those beds. Although from what I've seen, our ICU um numbers as far as patients in those, in those beds are very low. Uh, so it's lack of adequate staff. To be able to treat the number of ICU patients if those beds fill up. That's, that's all I have and I will report next month on the meeting for the Energy Authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Jeremy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um. I was late getting my uh quick report from our Director of F B I because she was working late even um as we are conducting this meeting. Helping local businesses process some of their um. State grants for businesses that are struggling due to COVID. So I appreciate and commend her efforts even after hours to meet people where they need to be met uh after hours and. When it's convenient for those local business uh owners to help support them and stay, keep afloat. Um. She's helping more than, or F B I is helping more than a dozen uh local businesses currently. Get through their grant applications for uh state funding to support them during COVID. Um, the deadline for the state grants have been, has been extended to the thirty first of this month. For those that are still seeking assistance. Um, please con- any business, please contact Fortuna Business Improvement District and Diana Rios there and she'll help support. Um. Support their, uh, their efforts to uh acquire those funds. Um, also I would like to thank F B I and the Chamber of Commerce for their activities throughout the holiday season. Um, I'll let the mayor talk about dazzle Fortuna, but uh I would really appreciate the uh, the lighted parade and the route and. And going through town and bringing holiday cheer to people sitting in their cars and not congregating, but still um. Doing what they can to, to celebrate Christmas and the holidays and uh wanted to also. Um, thank our Parks and Recs Department, even though they aren't directly involved. Um, it goes without saying that they. Have to partner with the uh Women's Auxiliary Group that puts the cutouts every year down the medians of the boulevard. I know that those got uh picked up this last weekend and, and they noticed that two were stolen or, or um. Inconveniently misplaced. So if anybody recognizes or sees uh a little shepherd boy with a sheep or a pickle. Um, please notify the Fortuna uh Fire Department and get those retrieved so that we can continue that um. Very uh heartwarming tradition. It doesn't feel right that those would be uh removed for public enjoyment. Um, also just. Thank you Parks. Thank you Cameron Mull. Thank you um. For um Humboldt Mountain Viking Association. I continue to drive by and it warms my heart to see that punk track used. Every day, all day. So many kids enjoying that thing. I don't know how it's draining with all this recent rain or anything, but. It would be underwater and mud if it wasn't for those guys and their efforts to put that track in place and. I love, love, love seeing those kids outside active and enjoying that facility. Along with the other facilities, I see soccer um in full swing, kids doing drills, wearing masks, but. I just love seeing our parks utilized. So those are the two committees I'm responsible for besides alternates on a couple others, but I just wanted to uh. You know, wish everybody a happy new year. Uh, here comes twenty twenty one. I'm excited for it for everybody. Uh, twenty twenty was one for the books for sure and I hope everybody has a prosperous new year.
Thank you, Jeremy. Can I ask you one question on that extension for the loans? I got notice from the chamber today that said January thirteenth. You said January thirty first. Do you know which one of those is right?
It's the thirteenth. My apologies. She just corrected me. Thank you for the correction.
All right, make sure you get those in by the thirteenth.
Thirteenth, yes, that's very important. I didn't want to, thank you for pointing that out. I don't want to give out bad information.
Thanks, Jeremy. And so we had a redact meeting on December fourteenth. We will have our regular meeting in January. Will we be picking new officers because some of the people that were on the board are no longer. Serving on councils. Um. I don't know if any of you tuned in. I think I saw Jeremy um, the town hall meeting with Mike McGuire on January sixteenth. It was um. Senator McGuire, myself, Glenn Sinisterra from the high school and then the health officer, Ian Hoffman. And. As Glenn jokingly said, when we were having our little pre-talk. Sue, as soon as the health officer comes on, no one will even notice whether or not we are here because basically that's what most people want to hear and that's kind of. Where most of the questions were directed was to the health officer and so. Um, we got our little spills at the beginning of the meeting and then just kind of sat back and listened to the rest of it. But. Um, I just appreciate Senator McGuire taking the time to at least join us by Zoom and Fortuna and hear some of the concerns. Um, holiday dazzle was really fun. I think the whole community was. Just grateful for all the participants and Fortuna, I mean, it was lit up and I must say that. Town for the like portions of town, Camden Heights rocked it. They had more entries and more. Um, decorations and lights than any other part of town. Um. The winners were, in case you haven't heard, for commercial Roach's Automotive was first place, Fortuna Fabrics was second, and Humboldt Distillery was third. And when we made the phone calls to tell the um winners, you know what they had won and they, they were just all so excited and they were just glad that they had participated and it was just. You know, really uplifting to just hear them be excited that they won. And I don't even know if it was the money or if it was just because people noticed and they are excited to do it again next year. For residential, the first place was seventeen seventy seven Xavier Court, which is on the corner of Kenwood and Xavier. That one was really good. Um, unfortunately, the guy came and picked up his check and said that he is going to be moving, but he would put in. A notice to anyone else who comes to rent the house that that was a requirement for, for being there. So we'll see if that really works, but. He did an outstanding job and then twenty one sixty nine Skylark, Skylark was second place. And I don't know if any of you drove down that little cul-de-sac, but there are four houses there and all four of the houses decorated. So it was really cool to see the whole little. Cul-de-sac, all the neighbors get involved and everybody bring out their lights and decorations. A third place was one eighteen twelfth street and I don't know if you guys. Know where that's at before the high school on the same side as the old Fortuna Motors, but those people decorate to the max every single year. And so. I was glad that they were recognized for their efforts because it's ongoing. And then because everyone was so generous in their donations, I also got to do an additional. Three mayor's choices. So my mayor's choices were nine sixty nine fourteenth street, which was the corner of fourteenth street and Carson Woods Road. Theirs was amazing. And then um. I really like themes. That's just kind of what I like and there were so, so many good um. Participants, so many good entries. It was really, really hard, but I did pick um. Uh, two on Brandy. One was nineteen forty four Brandy and they had a snowman theme. And the other one was eighteen forty eight Brandy and they have the ever infamous piggy theme. So. Um, those were the mayor choices and those were excited to when we called them. So. Um, I'd like to thank Renee from the chamber. We made an awesome team. She said I did the hard part. I said she did the hard part. So. Um, it really was a team effort on getting it all organized and we've got. A whole lot of ideas for next year and how it's going to be different and how it's going to work and um. I'd like to also thank Becky Giacomini for helping um round up funds and Danny Kelly for not thinking I'm crazy. Well, he probably thinks I'm crazy, but going along with my craziness. And all of the donors that made the whole contest possible. So. Um, with that, I would just like to wish everyone a happy new year and I hope that twenty twenty one is. A whole lot better for our businesses than twenty twenty has been. And um. That's it for tonight. So thank you all for joining us and we could use a motion to adjourn.
You can't. Tammy's not here.
Oh, I do have one more thing to add. Um, Mike Losi, I still have not heard from the mayor's select committee as to when they're going to schedule a meeting to. Um, reappoint someone to LAFCO. So um, I'll try to remember to email somebody this week on that and keep you in the loop on that.
Thank you so much.
You are welcome. So now we need a motion. Somebody's going to have to step up for Tammy.
Also move.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys. Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Happy.